Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, just and just for all. Is the delay in the order? With that little bit of delay here, people's pledging of allegiance to the team.
Thanks. I will entertain a motion to the law of Mr. Scott McBride to attend or at least begin attendance of this meeting remotely.
So. Second.
Should we start with a roll call first?
Okay.
And then the vote, starting with myself, aye. Mr. Repich?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
It's fine, you can go first, Scott.
I know we don't need one. All right, now, roll call, Mr. McBride.
Aye, present.
Mr. Rosetti?
Present.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Present.
Mr. Repich?
Here.
Myself, presence, Grace is absent. Right, gentlemen, I would ask you to review the meeting minutes from June twenty-six as presented with, I'd like to note the correction to Ms. Grace Duhajay's last name spelling. B U C H A J, correct?
Yes. I made the motion to approve the minutes from June twenty-six. My second.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Repich?
Aye.
And myself, same. I will entertain a motion to table, motion to approve meeting minutes from July ten, twenty twenty-three until our next meeting.
So.
I'll second.
Mr. McBride? Do we need a roll call?
Yes, please.
All right, Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Repich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, gentlemen, this evening, we have a guest speaker with a presentation, or possibly two speakers, I'm not sure how this is going to roll off. A lot of the discussion on aquifers as of late and most likely in our very near future. Is that the behest of Mr. Ray, or is this?
Uh, Mr. Reed.
Okay.
He's requested that we are working with Mr. Ray and Mr. Head to prepare.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
All these for no but one, but.
Uh, so my name is Jeff Freeman, and I work at Engineering Enterprises with Mr. Paulson. I actually grew up on Hillcrest Avenue and nineteen ninety graduate of Hampshire High School, so it's really good to be back to Hampshire. Having been a little tall for a while, but it's nice to see you guys and nice to be in front of you today. As discussed here, just to start with, it's our understanding, Ken knows he passed it on, that there's developments being proposed to the north of the village, and there's considerable interest in how those developments may or may not have an impact on the local aquifers, so. Uh, Mayor Reed had asked to have a presentation to the Village Board on the topic of aquifers, and then after seeing that presentation, there was a recommendation to also talk with the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. So, the way that the presentation is structured is first, we're going to go through a few definitions, it is fairly geology heavy. Anywhere along here, if you have any questions, just go ahead and stop me. We can address them then, or certainly at the end, we can have as much Q and A session as you would like. Talk again about the purpose and scope, a little more technical definition of what the purpose and scope is today. The geologic setting to set things up, and then we'll get into the details of aquifers and non-aquifers, because there obviously is a different difference. On five there, we'll focus first on actually Hampshire's wells and really identify the difference between Hampshire's wells, the depth, the construction of them versus the shallow residential wells that are in the Hampshire area. And then we'll actually get into those shallow sand and gravel aquifers and where most of the residential wells are drilled into. And then lastly, we'll talk about the risk of groundwater contamination, or essentially how you can limit that risk overall. Sorry, I want to see everything. Okay, so a few definitions, first of all, these are pretty much the textbook definitions, just to get them out there, you've probably heard these terms and even know what they are already. But an aquifer essentially is an underground body of water typically of rock or some porous material that can transmit groundwater. An aquatard or confining layer is often the very opposite of that, meaning it can't typically transfer water, or if it does, it is extremely slow rate overall. The overburden is essentially what we're going to see is there's bedrock, and there's actually several layers of bedrock, the overburden is the material that's on top of that. So generally, sand and gravel, clay, topsoil, things like that, which we'll go into a little bit later. And then moraine, which is something in this particular area that you're going to hear a lot of throughout this presentation, uh, is something that's created by glaciation moving forward. There's a diagram there in the lower right of a couple of different types of moraine, which we'll get into more in a second, but at the end is a terminal moraine when the glacier is moving forward and it stops and then starts to recede, and then sometimes there can be some on the edges or even in the middle. Purpose then is to describe again the geology hydro- hydrogeologic setting of the Hampshire area. Discuss the risk of the shallow groundwater contamination from, or potential risk, from containment, from manufacturing facilities. And then to build the presentation, we were essentially just using existing information, a lot of data out there, there's a couple of state agencies, for instance, have a lot of really good data. We didn't drill into anything beyond that or do any other specific analysis than point things out from existing information, but I think that it's good information to prove the points that we're trying to accomplish here. Talk briefly about glacial history of northern Illinois, this is just a very general schematic of what it would look like on the surface overall with, you know, topsoil, in some cases greenery, in some cases rivers and streams and tributaries that come into it. Below that is a lot of bedrock formations, again, in multiple types of geology, multiple types of stone, uh, some of them being able to be more porous that can carry water, like the sandstone, for instance, would be an aquifer. Whereas the shale that's identified on that would be an aquatard, where water generally cannot flow through it. So at one time, one point in time, pre-Ice Age, I guess, we've great glaciers, this might have been what the surface looked like, then the glaciers started moving through this area and pushing all that overburden, remember we talked about the overburden that's on top of the, uh, bedrock. It's pushing all that material around with that ice out in time, and it moves it depending on the size of the material, whether it's fine grained or coarse grained, it might go further or less. It may deposit in different areas. After those glaciers then started to melt, overall, then the materials started to sort based on size, and it would deposit in different locations. For instance, you know, on this one back here, there was a depression in the top of the bedrock. Well, as the ice pushed through, it tends to deposit, you know, material in those depressions here and here, and in this instance, it's more of a sand and gravel depression that's underlying a river or stream, and this one, it's more of a till, which is like a clay that's pushing through. So you get again with all these glaciers, and of course, there was multiple events where glaciers were pushing forward and receiving overall. In this instance, you've got a moraine that started to develop at the end of the glacier, because again, it pushed that material and created the hill there overall. And then after it fully releases, the meltwaters, for instance, found their way through the middle of this moraine and created the spines or tributaries to that overall creek. Here you have an end moraine again, where that material had set, and that's very important again, based on what we're going to show you in the Hampshire area. So then getting into, let's look specific to Hampshire, this is a depiction of the surface topography throughout the Hampshire area. Uh, the high points, of course, are the raised portions of this, this is actually a moraine, it's the Moringo Moraine, it's actually kind of right on top of or right below Briar Hill Road. So as you're traveling around Hampshire, you're on Briar Hill, that's generally a higher area as it goes through. To the east of Briar Hill, interestingly, if rainwater hits the ground surface, it goes to the Fox River, it would be in the Fox River watershed. If it hits west of the moraine, it generally goes to the Kishawaki and the Rock River, so that'd be part of the Rock River watershed. You can see there's other areas based on the surface topography where it's certainly more flat as you head to the west and northwest towards Moringo. When you get over top of this moraine, for instance, there's some flat areas in there as well, and then when you get farther to the east, you know, through the Fox River, you get a little bit of topography in that direction. As part of the sections that I'm showing you in a second, there's a section generally, this east-west quadrant running across right through Hampshire, and then we'll be able to get the cutaway to see what the geology looks like underneath. This is a generalized hydrogeologic cross-section, although the gentleman that helped draw this for us was using the actual information to give you a general idea. We're going to focus on two areas, the south area first, so the bedrock starting from, uh, actually down in this area, moving down. And then the unconsolidated portion is that shallow portion, that overburden that I've been talking about previously on top.
Yeah.
Yes.
But your arrow on the screen isn't tracking.
Oh, it doesn't show up? Okay. Thank you, it looks so good when I point at it. So I'll have to maybe just point at the screen up here for you, but thank you for mentioning that. So again, uh, overall, we've got the bedrock formations, aquifer, non-aquifers, and then up above got the unconsolidated. So the deep aquifers are identified there in the lighter blue on the map, and then the aquatards, while they're still bedrock, they would be things like shale and in some cases dolomite. Sometimes dolomite can carry water, but in lower depths typically not, uh, but those would be the aquatards that are in between. And then again, the shallow aquifers up top, which would be your sand and gravel typically in the area above what is the shell bedrock formation, which would be a limestone that some of the residents might gain up top there. So let's get into a little more detail on each one of these aquifers. The main deep sandstone aquifers through Hampshire and through seven, all seven states, Illinois plus six others around this area is what's called the Cambrian or Divisian aquifer system, might have heard that term before. Uh, the sandstones starting from the top are the Ansel Aquifer, sometimes referred to as the St. Peter Formation. And then you have typically a limestone in between, and then Ironton Galesville Aquifer below that. Those are the ones that are the most common, that communities are tapped into. Get a little bit deeper than that, you actually get into what's called the Mount Simon Aquifer, and Hampshire actually has a well on the Mount Simon as do a couple other communities in the area. Five hundred million years ago is when these bedrock formations were created. They outcrop in areas like if you've ever been out to Starved Rock, and you see the sandstone out there, that's actually the Ansel Aquifer, however, in Hampshire, it's about seven hundred feet deep.
So that's actually why it's named the Ordivician, correct, is the H?
Yes, exactly, the Cambrian is another age as well, it's Cambrian or Division. Uh, also, when you get up to around Wisconsin Dells, and you see sandstone up there, that would be more like the Ironton Galesville that's outcropping up in that area. I'm not sure where the Mount Simon, if it actually outcrops anywhere overall. So then, these are the village's wells, the village has three active wells, nine, ten, and thirteen. They are drilled all the way down into the Ironton Galesville Aquifer. They are cased all the way to the top of the Ironton Galesville, meaning there's steel casing that goes from at least two feet above the ground surface down to about a thousand feet deep. So nothing can get in because that's cemented in with that casing from again, two feet above down to a thousand feet. Then from the approximately thousand to let's just say thirteen hundred feet deep, there's open formation to be able to pull water from that sandstone for nine, ten, and thirteen. Well, twelve, which currently doesn't have a pump and motor in it, because the village actually doesn't need to utilize it yet, based on current capacity of nine, ten, and thirteen, is drilled even deeper down into the Mount Simon Formation. So at that point, you're probably fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred feet deep, and then it goes, you know, a couple hundred, uh, feet into the Mount Simon overall. Just want to look at the right side of the graph there overall, or the exhibit that shows that actually the elevation above mean sea level. So the Hampshire area elevation is on the order of eight, nine hundred, maybe down a little bit less than that. You can see that the Ironton Galesville is actually below sea level, and then Mount Simon is even further below sea level as well. There is potable water in those aquifers, they do require some level of treatment typically for radium and sometimes barium, and then the village also softens that water. We have the dotted line on the graph which indicates your groundwater elevation, so these aquifers are Artesian, and what that means is when you tap into them, uh, based on the head of the aquifer coming, you know, the water essentially coming from their areas like Starved Rock builds up head in this area, so when you open up in at the water level inside the well, it actually goes above the top of that formation. It's a confined, uh, Artesian aquifer overall. So those elevations right now, and we'll show you some later, around four hundred feet above mean sea level. When a well turns on, that local groundwater elevation does draw down to be able to get the water into the pump and motor and then take it out, but in general, that's where the elevation is. And that water, again, it's fully confined, so even if that groundwater elevation gets up close to the surface, it's not actually up close to the surface because that formation above it, which I know this doesn't work, and you can't really point well, and I'm short. Um, this actually won't allow the water to go up into the aquifer, it's under pressure inside of that. This is the schematic of the Mount Simon Aquifer, or really the full extent of this Cambrian, Cambrian or Divisian aquifer system, like I said, seven states. This covers, so it's not some small local aquifer system, it goes all the way out into Iowa, Missouri, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Indiana, and Upper Peninsula of Michigan. And there are many, many folks that are pulling from it in all those different areas, uh, throughout that, this Midwest area. Uh, the direction of flow in the Mount Simon goes in different directions just based on how the aquifer is set up hydrologically, and then the formations overall. This pocket here, uh, over by Chicago back in the day, and this was in nineteen eighty, that's called the Cone of Depression. So essentially, the aquifer was being drawn down, if you imagine an inverted cone, the water surface in that area was drawing down as well. You're going to see even more of Cone of Depression when we get into Ironton Galesville. So again, Mount Simon, all the way on the bottom. This is almost modern day Ironton Galesville Formation, again, nine, ten, and eleven, or nine, ten, and thirteen, sorry, for the village is into the Ironton Galesville Formation. And each one of these lines again is the elevation of the water overall. So up in the Hampshire area in the northwest corner, water level is about four hundred feet above mean sea level overall. The area where you see this large corner depression, uh, in red says minus one fifty, so water levels are significantly lower, that would be the Joliet area. If you did not know, uh, the city of Joliet, as well as six other communities in that area, are converting over Lake Michigan water to get water from the city of Chicago. The other thing to point out here is, um, the, there's the Sandwich Fault. So that, that's the line that's traversing across from the northwest to the southeast, there is actually a fault through this Cambrian or Division system which inhibits horizontal flow coming from the south across, in certain areas down by Joliet, who's right up against that fall, that limits their amount that they can get out of the aquifer. If you did not know, actually, in that area, a separate set of communities, York Foss, Weegon, Montgomery, are also working on getting Lake Michigan water from the Page Water Commission, which is water from the city of Chicago too. So those communities down in those areas had identified that the longevity of the aquifer was a concern, so then he has changed to a different, more sustainable water source. Up in the Hampshire area, when you look at these, uh, the pentrometric surface or the water levels up in this area, much, much better, much higher overall. Uh, there's less communities that are pulling from the deep aquifer up in this area, so the longevity of the Cambrian or Division for Hampshire is much longer. Which community specifically in the area are on the deep sandstone? The darkest brown color here is, uh, on the sandstone aquifer and only the sandstone. The tan, which would be like Moringo up to the northwest, they're only on the shallow aquifer, so either sand and gravel or that upper limestone formation that's pretty close to the surface. And then the mixed kind of brown is shallow and deep, so a mix, for instance, would be Burlington to the south of you. Um, Elgonquin is another one, Carpernursville, to the east is another mix as well. So deep and only deep are communities like Hampshire, uh, just to the east of you, of course, is Finger Grove. Huntley is all deep aquifer as well, and then if you didn't know, the city of Elgin gets, uh, on the order of eighty percent of their water from the Fox River, and then they supplement that with the deep aquifer as well, especially during times of poor water quality, low water levels in the Fox River. Uh, one thing to point out here is there are some communities actually within this window that are already thinking about moving over to Lake Michigan water, for instance, Crystal Lake is in the middle of the study right now to connect, and they've reached out to some of the communities as well, uh, to see if they might be interested. So if some of those communities are on the deep aquifer system and they leave, that even frees up more capacity for the village of Hampshire in the long run. Okay, so done with the deep aquifer, uh, again, just stop me if you have any questions on that, we can certainly come back to any of these, but let's go ahead and focus on the shallow. And first, again, just to reiterate, the difference, the significant difference in the aquifers that the village is pulling from versus the aquifers that the residential wells would be pulling from, especially to the north of the village. Let's take that cross-section that we're showing you and blow it up. So I mentioned the Moringo Moraine, which is the large green hill, let's just call it, in Briar Hill Road, and running down the middle of that as it traverses, uh, north-south across the community. Below, or as part of that moraine, it's a bunch of till, so till is generally clay. Just think about it as clay, water generally doesn't want to pass through it, uh, will hold a lot of it above it, it can be a confining layer. To the west of the moraine was an outwash, so where the glacier came through, it melted, it kind of created a larger outwash of sand and gravel. That's called the Henry Formation, which is the H on the left here, up towards the ground surface. And then you get some of the combined, confined sand and gravel deposits as you go through here, which is this, uh, area there, uh, passing through where you could have some till on top of it, and then getting down into Glassford Formation or into bedrock after that overall, so you get this mix. Uh, to the east, you see the, the comment there, that's the Glacial Lake of Finger Grove. So at, at one time, that was a large, um, lake, I guess, slash swamp, uh, overall, and then of course, the train over time as well. Okay, so let's take that cross-section and then drop back and look a little bit closer at what it might look in the plan view. So think just colors are colors, so we've got the green colors, and you can see that that Moringo Moraine again is running through the area around I ninety, this is Route twenty coming through at that intersection at the tollway. So all throughout this area is primarily that till and, and clay layer. It's when you get further to the west or north that you start to get the sand and gravel being closer to the surface overall. This is just a graph, and a lot of our data comes from Illinois State Geological Survey and Illinois State Water Survey, so state entities that are responsible for mapping this information, studying the hydrogeology of it as well, overall. So this is another map that they've provided that shows the shallow aquifer groundwaterers, um, high use or high sand and gravel productivity aquifers in the area overall in the hatching. So orient you again, um, the yellow up top there is the northern portion of the light property, and then the other box there, that's actually southwest of I ninety and Route twenty. And then you get to the west, of course, that's along Higgins, and then the road that's coming up, uh, north-south in this area would be Whitmire as it hits Higgins right before the turn right and the left on Route twenty. I've gone that route many, many times as a kid. Uh, okay, so focusing in a little bit further, again, uh, the light properties as it straddles Dietrich Road up in the general area, again, ninety and twenty, and then the other parcel that's to the south, or southwest corner of I ninety and Route twenty. We were able to look at the state's database and locate a well log, actually, you can access any of the well logs in this subdivision as well as other areas. And I just wanted to show you what a particular well log looks like out in the area. So this particular well is two hundred and thirty-five feet deep in total, and I want to highlight a few things. So from three, the first three feet is topsoil, and then from three to fifty-four feet, there's clay. That's very good. When you're looking at overburden, you're looking at protection from anything overall, surface water coming down into a well, uh, any other risk, fifty feet of clay is really good to have. There is a little bit of sand and gravel, we've shown on some of the cross-sections that there might be a little bit of sand and gravel, uh, but that, after that twenty feet, then we get another, what is that, a hundred and fifty-ish feet of, uh, sand, of, um, clay again as well. And then the last fourteen feet is sand and gravel, and as we'll see, that's actually the portion where they are pulling their water from. So the casing in this instance, this residential well is from zero to two hundred and thirty-two feet, so they're taking the casing all the way down. Nothing should be able to penetrate that casing because it's cemented in for the first two hundred and thirty-two feet, and then at the bottom there, from two thirty-two to two thirty-five is where they have the well screen, and they're actually pulling the water off of probably right above the bedrock, uh, in that particular well.
Generally speaking, layers of clay, especially with thickness like that, that would be considered to be non-permeable, generally speaking?
Yes, yes. Other things, of course, you have nature that can help you, or geology that can help you, but there's other strategies to reduce groundwater contamination, listed out a couple more here. Obviously, land use planning, ideally, you wouldn't want to put things where there, if there's a high risk that there would be contamination over top of sand and gravel. They said what we've seen, we do not see that here, it's over top of that moraine and a lot of till. The village does have an industrial pretreatment ordinance where if a facility has chemicals, especially hazardous waste chemicals, the village will set them up with a permit and a requirement to inspect them on a regular basis, as well as them having to do things like emergency response plans and, uh, use good housekeeping practices. So overall, it's really what it is, is depending on those industries to use good housekeeping practices, again, the village has ordinances in place to enforce that as well. And then the chemical storage and secondary contamination would be part of that also. With that, any questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Do resident wells typically have the casing that you're talking about? Do residential wells typically have the casing that you're talking about?
Yes, they do. There could be some really, really old sand points back in the day that maybe aren't as protective, but certainly modern wells, and I would say anything in the past 50-plus years would have that type of construction because it was required.
Is this going to be available to the public, presentation?
It's a good question. We can check with-
You're out of the choice, do you?
Yeah. It's a private document. This is a public meeting, so it's available.
I was going to, at the end, ask if we couldn't get this email to us-
Email?
If at all possible, yes. I myself am actually very interested in a lot of this. Amusingly enough, I actually have one of my hiking bags down here. I myself am very familiar with Madison, Star Rock, Kettle Moraine. The glacial geology of Illinois is something that I've been awfully interested in my own, right? You know, Cassa Key Torns, everything that created the Star Rock. The fact that the Earth's crust is actually rebounding several inches a year because of the glaciers and ice age and everything, no longer existing, the Earth's crust is actually rebounding. As far as the layers that exist, going down 200 feet, 500 feet, 600 feet, is there an average estimate among time for penetration saturation for contaminants groundwater release? Is there a set ratio or something that might be known? How long it might take for a spill to get to 200 feet, to 500 feet, to 1,000 feet?
Yeah, totally depends on the geology, as I'm sure you can imagine. You could set up groundwater models to estimate it, but there's just too much variation, especially in that overburden, to fully estimate that just based on rules of thumb. The bedrock, they have done some dating on the water down in the Cambrian Ordination aquifer, and that water is generally millions of years old, so it takes a really long time even for that to recharge west of here and north of here and then get to this area based on that overall porosity. So from the village's wells, again, very, very long time. Locally, I mean, it's, it's too hard to say again, just based on, we'll go a little bit on.
I did notice a lot of the, the cutaways where there was sea level, but off the top of our heads, like from ground level, what's the depth of a lot of our wells? We have the 9, 10, and 13.
Well, at 900, if we're right around, I want it to go 99 or 980 AGL.
Yeah, so ground surface tends to be better. I mean, up on the moraine, you're probably close to 1,000-ish or less, 900.
Yeah. So well, our 12 is approximately 1,800 feet?
In total depth, yes, it's getting into that range, 1,800. 1,800 to 2,000. It's been a while since we looked at that well though.
So you, we're looking at a well report for residential property in the north end of town, which is available for review. So just, just for me, is it safe to assume that residential properties who are pulling from those residential, with their residential wells are pulling from the same aquifer?
Many of them probably are. Some might be at differing depths.
Right, but that 230, 235 feet, I mean, plus or minus, you know, the elevation of the property is probably consistent across properties who have residential wells.
Yes, there-
And then that makeup of 50 feet of clay, that's, it's probably consistent, right? I mean, without any, you know, certainty, but it's, it's fairly consistent.
Fairly, yes, yes. The, the numbers actually on this, just so you know, are the total depth of the wells. So there are some, if you look real close, that are a little bit shallower, like along that Hellcrest Drive, one here, there's a 70 there, there's some shallower ones here, 70, 90, 100. A lot of them are in that 200 range, 150. Fortunately, not all of the well logs get down to the state in the database, so this is just what's available. But like we showed, even for those that are 70 feet deep, they probably have 50 feet of clay above them. There's many municipal wells that are drilled with 50 and in some cases even less, because there's some areas, even in King County, we showed that, that there's some that are shallow sand and gravel communities where they only have, you know, 20, 30, 50 feet of clay above their sand and gravel, and they find that it's not an issue for them. Yes, we're pulling a lot more water here.
You guys have any data for anything to the east and the north for some of those properties that are in the unincorporated Huntley area that have raised a very large concern with us as well, with the depths on there, long as it will?
I have not looked into that. We could look into it. The east wouldn't be too hard because that's in King County, and you know where we can find that information. The McHenry, we're going to look at that as well.
You mentioned that layer of clay is non-permeable. How does the aquifer get regenerated?
So typically, kind of like the deep sandstone, where that moves out, again, out in Ottawa, where it's coming to the surface, that water gets in there and then it just travels in this direction. It's not unlike this situation where you've got the sand. The Henry Formation is west of the moraine there on top, so they, water can generally get in there. It can very slowly get through thin layers of the till, which is that green, get down into the Glassford Formation, and then even down into the bedrock. So if it's closer to the bedrock on sections that, you know, can get down through, kind of travel down in areas where it can penetrate and then move laterally.
I'm curious, off the top of your head, as far as the porosity of like the sandstone, excuse me, with the St. John, St. Peter?
Thank you.
Again, that kind of circles back to what we've already discussed, is generally unknown how long it might take for that filtration process to occur, you know, whether that's decades, hundreds, thousands of years. But generally speaking, like what, what's the industry accepted perspective on like the filtration process? Microns, is it just water? What can get through, what might get through?
Um, it's more about probably measuring the water quality to see if it meets the standards overall. So, you know, when we're drilling a well for the village of Hampshire, we're going to pull water quality scan. With this regional aquifer, it's fairly predictable based on the size and the number of wells that are into it. With the shallow sand and gravel, again, they'll look at water quality. They send samples, they can send samples to the Department of Public Health. I think there's some screening to start with. Typically, when you're doing shallow wells, you're looking at things like iron and manganese for your red water. In some cases, they'll look at nitrates because that can be a challenge overall. But yeah, as far as looking at everything in full, you just can't for everybody. You look at well construction as a big key and the type of geology that's there. Again, with 50 feet of clay on top of it, you can have a lot of confidence in that
Best guess, unless you have some, I've been in on some meetings. Why wouldn't Arlington Heights, I know Elgin has the river, why wouldn't some of the communities that aren't quite close enough to Chicago Lake Michigan, but they aren't out here, why wouldn't they just drill the deep wells like we have?
Because in certain areas, uh... Show that. Everybody kind of runs to the southeast down in very southeast portion of King County, heading into northern Will. I mean, you're just not going to be able to depend on the deep aquifer for a very long time. I mean, Joliet, if you did not know, the projection is that they need to switch by about 2030, otherwise some of their wells are going to become inoperable. When you go to the east, and we do have a separate map, I didn't bring it today, but Lake Michigan water essentially is in all of DuPage County here overall. Do I have a map? I don't.
So the problem isn't that they don't have the deep wells, it's that depression of the deep wells are now deep, deep, or empty.
Or they're going to run out of water. So if you invest heavily in drilling these wells, the treatment for them, the system, the backbone, and you can only depend on it for 20 years-
Yeah, yeah.
-that's not working.
I see.
So they need a source that they can depend on, like Lake Michigan, and they set up the systems for 100 years to be able to bring that water out. But then there becomes a breaking point where if you have the ability to go into the deep aquifer, it's way cheaper than getting Lake Michigan water. We worked on Sarwoley System Effect, we're working on Joliet Project, we're working on the Oscego-Yorco, Montgomery Project, we looked at Lake Michigan, Lake Zurich. What we're finding is, is that for communities like you, if you were going to switch to Lake Michigan, you'd have to double to triple your water rates to be able to afford it. So if you have the ability to go into the deep aquifer, there is sustainability for multiple, multiple decades out into the future, it's probably not in your best interest to spend that extra money now.
Why the, you called it a depression, or why? Is it purely because of that fault is preventing backfill?
Imagine all these communities with straws down into the deep aquifer, and they're just pumping away at the, a level to the water can't actually get there to replenish all the water that they're pulling out.
Right.
So it's just pulling that water level down locally overall, and then it starts to be able to pull water from all directions to try to satisfy that need. But to the south, the water can't pass through, so it's really working hard to get all that water in as many directions that are left over.
Because of the fault.
Fault, yes, makes a big difference overall.
It's like a slow sponge.
Yes, exactly. I mean, the sandstone, so again, if you've ever been to Star Rock, this is rock that's pretty consolidated, and if you try to imagine water flowing through it, I mean, it doesn't really look like probably that porous of a rock. So there's enough there from an elevation perspective head on that you can get water out of it, but there's a limit to how much you can pull through.
Okay, thank you.
It's like pushing heavy fluid through a wall there.
Right, but we're all doing that. You know what I mean? Why is that one, why are they at that spot?
Yeah, too high of a withdrawal in that area that you can't get water to it. Up in northwest, King County, where Hampshire's at, there's a lot less of a demand. You know, down here, the six communities, there's 250,000 people that are pulling from that aquifer that in a generally smaller area, up in the Hampshire area, your population much smaller.
And that's that second to lowest? That's not the deepest, deepest, that was the second to deepest?
Ironton-Galesville. Down in that area, you can't actually pull from the Mount Simon. If you try to pull from the Mount Simon down there, you're going to get brackish water because you're so far below sea level, basically, and so.
Is Hampshire going to reach a point with their population growing, they're going to have to worry about running out of water?
I don't think so in probably my lifetime. It's hard to put an exact timeframe on it. The Illinois State Water Survey does have a regional groundwater model that models this whole area, and it takes into account actually the boundary conditions coming from Wisconsin, coming from the west, et cetera. They have for probably seven or eight communities done analysis specific to those communities to evaluate the longevity of the wells. So we have, for instance, again, part of that project, they did it for us. Huntley, we've done it for them. Based on, I guess, aren't, we have not done that work, or the village has not done that work with that model. It is something that we started to talk to them about, but just based on Huntley's work, our knowledge of the area over here definitely have up to 2050, which is a gen, the current general master planning timeframe for the village on their water system, and I would say you have multiple decades beyond that. I can't say 35 years, you know, you're going to run out of water, because it highly depends. Is Huntley going to remain on the deep aquifer? Like, they do something else? They tap into some shallow sources? They do something else? How is Finger Grove going to grow? Burlington, et cetera?
We haven't even started to pull from the deep.
The Mount Simon, no, but that's, again, even deeper, and there's very limited communities that are in that. For instance, South Elgin has two Mount Simon wells, Hampshire's one, and it might only be one other one that I love in northeast Illinois. So very different than the folks in the Ironton-Galesville and the St. Peter, and it was wise for the village to think about diversifying their sources of aquifers back when they did that in like 2005.
Are you familiar with the well that's being drilled right now at Huntley?
Yes, we are, the design engineers for that.
How, how deep?
That's Ironton-Galesville.
And how deep is it?
Uh, it's Ironton-Galesville, so about 1,300 feet deep. Oh, behind the wall there.
So as far as a lot of the discourse discussion that's been occurring as of late, which is why you're here, I don't want to get too specific, but I don't want to be too vague. Generally speaking, if you are shallower, shallower than 50 or 60 feet, that's the range that you're concerned about immediate ground contact, groundwater spills, fuels, soaps, things of that sort. Generally speaking, if your well is above those layers of clay, that's the immediate concern for examination of your drinking potable water, correct?
I would say take industrial, everything out of it, just farm fields obviously use pesticides for good reason, fertilizer, things like that. I wouldn't plant a well that's only 50 feet deep if it's all sand and gravel there.
That's kind of the point I'm trying to get to exactly, is if there are people that may have wells that shallow, that's, I mean, that's the exact same reason that they tell you not to drink water at Star Rock because of farmland runoff, that is pesticides, that's nitrates, nitrates getting into the water, and they tell you not to drink that water because it hasn't been filtered by nature.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, a safe depth is something much deeper than 50 or 60 feet, because that would be just your watering, your garden, your watering, something that drinking.
I mean, if you can, again, the target being, if you can get to at least 50 feet of clay above it, anything below that they were drawing from, I would have confidence in based on till, clay protecting above it. Okay?
It helps, thank you.
Good? Appreciate the problem. We'll get you guys a copy of the electronic-
Thank you.
Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Quite informative and educational, thank you. Absolutely, we appreciate it. We could be tested.
No, I didn't bring anything, no. You did well, though, that's a good question.
My mind right now is how does this commission respond to public opinion for comments when they vocalize concerns about their wells, their concerns about examination of aquifer? How do we respond? None of us here are experts. How do we respond to that?
I myself, my two cents, I wouldn't say it's our place to respond. We are not the trained scientific experts, but we have had a trained scientific expert in front of us educating us to the best of his ability. So it's not really our place as a commission. We have nothing to do really with groundwater, to be honest. But we have ourselves been educated.
Yeah, I, I think commissioners, I mean, it provides us with the foundation not to, for quote, lack of that to show folks are talking about. We now have facts from the, to support the village board. So, you know, folks can come in and say, well, you know, my well, we have someone now say, your well, in some locations, it's 235 feet, 50 feet of clay above it.
And we might also-
Not disregarding your groundwater contamination, but we also now know that there is, we have some facts behind the decisions we make. I don't think we have to answer to any of those public comments, but it should help through those decision-making processes.
The short of it being, if somebody spills a five-gallon bucket of gasoline, it's not regulating right into their well.
And we may also direct those persons to the village website, review meeting minutes, recordings, public records such as this. Or we could give them the nice gentleman's business card.
I mean, the other, we have a stack. The other thing to look at too is, is- I mean, the other, leave us that. The other thing to look at too is, is for this, if there are any spills, the remediation and the cleanup, which is usually, unless it's obtusely and grossly missed, is usually pretty quick. So the likelihood, the likelihood of it going down is less because still are pigs who, you know, they're, they're going to be the ones that are getting the remediation of those areas unless this is just something that has completely been missed for years, if not decades. So I, you know, I, I think, I think it'll give us a better, better look at it and a little bit more comfort when we're looking at what type of businesses and what type of products and what type of zoning we're looking at allowing out there. There still would have to be additional studies done, I believe, but I, I think it, it lets my mind be a little bit more at ease knowing this.
Actually, there's maybe a question for actually everyone except Mr. Vaselli. Are there minimum depth requirements by King County code, Illinois regulations? Like you, if you need to drill a well, is there a depth to which you have to start? Is there like a minimum, if you need a well for drinking water, is there any state question, any regulation requiring you have to seventy-five feet or deeper, hundred feet or deeper?
Yeah, I'd have to look into that. I remember typically working with municipalities and that's not even a question. So if looking.
Okay. But the only reason I asked about that one is there are some unincorporated properties that have spoken on recent properties developments. You know, outside of the village purview, outside of our ordinances, we don't know what they're doing. We don't know how deep they're drilling or not drilling. So that's obviously a question mark that. So, all right.
Anything further, gentlemen, on aquifers, water, glaciation, baking?
All right. Uh, next agenda item. Recommended approval of a zoning text amendment to add regulations concerning electric vehicle charging, including but not limited to standards for setbacks, parking, appearance, and access. Mr. Josh Ray, any additional background on this?
Uh, so at the commission's last meeting, this was discussed. Uh, there were some modifications that were requested, especially Commissioner Duhai. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here, but I did work with her on her professional knowledge of this. She's been involved on the engineering side of several facilities in the last couple of years that installed a lot of EV charging. So, um, she suggested some changes. Um, some of the biggest ones, I mean, there's, one big thing is that the zoning code did not define what a retail gasoline sales were. And, you know, the commission seemed favorable of kind of treating electric vehicle charging businesses similar to a, a fuel station. So, um, rather than trying to create some kind of new definition for that, Ms. Duhai just said we should include it in the existing definition of a automobile service station. Um, so the, the ordinance also now kind of cleans up some of those definitional things, uh, where before it was kind of plain language and it would be up for interpretation of, okay, what is, what is automotive repair? What is a cert, you know, retail sales? Um, so it just kind of cleans up some of those things, um, as well as adding, um, a more defined, or what should I say, a more standard, um, ratio for accessible charging. I believe Ms. Duhai brought up that the international building code actually requires five percent of spaces at minimum be accessible, uh, for electric vehicle charging. And so that's not in this amendment anymore because that's a building regulation. So in conjunction with this zoning amendment, staff will also prepare amendments to other parts of the village code, uh, when we take it to the board, and that will include the five percent um, that Ms. Duhai referenced in the international building code. Uh, so if there's, if there's any questions, we can of course go through any part of the, the draft language there. Um, our attorney will of course review all of this before it becomes ordinance and we'll check for any, any kinds of legal issues, but it should be all fine.
And not entirely for or against the record, but yes, Josh and Ms. Duhai did have quite a bit of discourse back and forth on this. Uh, I will regret her not being able to attend this evening. Quite a bit of discussion that I did not want to get involved in, lose any fingers over.
Hey Josh, when, when we talked last meeting, you said that, you know, while this is pressing just towards our EV readiness designation through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, that we had some time to review this, is it possible, I mean, I would like Commissioner Duhai here to discuss this because she had, you know, a lot of the input. I'd like, is it possible that we push this to the next meeting just, just so Commissioner Duhai, or, you know, do these fairly, do these adage fairly, um, highlight some of the changes she desired based on her professional background?
If that's what the commission would like to do, that's fine. She, she did agree to this exact, uh, copy before I included it in the packet, um, just, you know, for your information. But if that's what the commission wants to do, like you said, there's no, uh, you know, Loves is, is going to be installing some EV charging stations pretty soon as long, along with, I think, Road Ranger. They got, you know, the big grants to do that through Illinois or maybe Combin. Um, so other than that, there's nothing really pressing about it. I would probably not suggest the next meeting just because it's likely that there is going to be a, it's going to be a very large meeting, um, for a, a different petition for the light properties. Uh, so we had kind of planned the meeting so that it would, it would fall on this one for EV charging, uh, as the final vote. But like you said, nothing pressing. So do it, commission can do what it wishes.
Uh, I, I do have email proof, um, that she gave her blessing to what is in front of us this evening. Uh, if it's so needed, I can show after a meeting. I don't know if it's legally acceptable. Um, but no, I, she, Ms. Duhai did approve. She was content with the verbiage that's in front of us this evening.
That being said, I'm, I, I can make a motion that we accept it.
Okay.
For Josh, for the, for the sake of our knowledge and pulling, pulling off those Commissioner Duhai now, is it possible that, you know, I, I do, and we'll pay to take a vote on this tonight, uh, but then we put an item on a future agenda that just allows us to circle back just to kind of.
General discussion.
General discussion on this to allow Commissioner Duhai to kind of override a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with it, but I'd like to hear it from, from Grace. But yeah, I'm okay to vote on this as well this evening.
I can always motion both ways and we'll see motion votes, but I will entertain a motion to recommend approval of a zoning text amendment to add regulations concerning electric vehicle charging, including but not limited to standards for setbacks, parking, appearance, and access as presented this evening.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. McBride?
Hi.
Mr. Rosetti?
Hi.
Mr. Neal?
Hi.
Mr. Rebisch?
Hi.
The South's name. Passes. Uh, with nothing else on that, I will entertain a motion to authorize the chair to report the actions of this meeting's commission meeting, this evening's commission meeting. Did I say that right?
No, it's fine.
With appropriate findings of fact and recommendations to the village board, trust me.
So.
Mr. McBride?
Hi.
Mr. Rosetti?
Hi.
Mr. Neal?
Hi.
Mr. Rebisch?
Hi.
South, hi. Same meetings twice. Uh, do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening? Uh, we do not. I don't recall seeing a signature put out. I do not have any announcements. Then entertain a motion to adjourn at eight p.m.
We'll make a motion.
Sir.
Answer, bro. Mr. McBride?
Hi.
Mr. Rosetti?
Hi.
Mr. Neal?
Hi.
Mr. Rebisch?
Hi.
South, hi. Did everybody say meeting twice? Report the actions of this meeting.
Hey, don't worry. Oh, you don't know. How about yourself?